Good evening and welcome. And welcome to regular council meeting for April seventeenth. Despite what your cattle may say, it is April seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. We began at six o'clock. And at this time, we will ask Councilman White to give us the invitation.
Father God, our God, our career, our sustainability, thank you for allowing us to be here listening. Father God, we ask that you would just guide us in this meeting. We ask that you would just give us knowledge, wisdom, and understanding to discuss all of the matters that are before us, that we would have these citizens of Allendale County that fall from our minds and our hearts. Father God, right now, we take the time to ask a special blessing for the Smith family, one of our department heads we've lost. Allendale County has lost a member of its family. We ask that you would just guide this family through this time of loss. These blessings, and all of us, we ask in worship and Jesus Christ's name, for this.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilman White, and appreciate the acknowledgement and expression of condolences to the Smith family. He was a friend, colleague, father, husband, and a good friend of the county, we say. An employee, yes, but he was a good citizen, he's going to be missed, and our condolences go out to Valerie, our treasurer, and her family. At this time, we'd like a declaration of the court. And we do have a declaration. Five out of five. Item four, approval of our agenda. So, moving properly second, for the approval of our agenda here on April seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Any question? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Poses? Aye, aye. Item five, approval of our minutes on our last regular council meeting, which was held March twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Need a motion? Moving properly second, have we approved the minutes of March twentieth, twenty twenty-five? Any question? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Poses? Ayes by the same side? Aye, aye. Again, welcome. Crowd is smaller than usual, even usually, and I imagine because it is the day before Good Friday, a lot of folks are out. Happy to see our former administrator and councilperson, Mr. Pinkney, here. He decided to come in spite of. Appreciate having you. And we're down to public comments, and Mr. Pinkney, you're number one.
Yes, sir. To our chair and to our councilwoman and lady, and to our council staff, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here tonight on the behalf of the CTC, which is the County Transportation Committee Chair. And I'd like to just inform you all of some things, keep you all in the loop. In the last eight years, we probably received about ten million dollars from the state to do what we want with the CTC, with repaving and other things that the county may have need. But right now, we only have about five hundred thousand dollars on hand that we can spend. We have an allocation of about eighty-eight thousand dollars a month that comes in. And we're going to try our best to do the best we can with what we get to help the citizen get off the dirt, on rock, and soon on blacktop. But what we need to do is, in eighteen, we paved about ten or eleven streets here in the town of Allendale. And none of those streets has been maintained since then. We purchased in eighteen a tractor and a bushel to mow those streets to keep the grass down, because those streets now are county streets rather than state streets. They're not state streets, they're county streets. And I rode them last week. The limbs and trees done growed across some of the streets.
I rode them when Pete wanted to wave down and says, "Wait, wait for years."
And the grass, the old dead grass from the last two, three years is just high. The new grass, you can't see it for the old grass. So, we need to take, give it public work and have public work go maintain those streets. The other thing is, we have three streets in Fairfax that they were working on that um...
When you say B O T or us?
Us. Those streets was rocked under Mr. Bill Yarborough when CTC first started. Those three streets I had in the map and the plan, they were paved in eighteen, but we fall short. We now have an engineer on the job getting ready to work up a estimate so that we can beat it out to get those three streets paved there in Fairfax. And then, we're going to look at the rocking side of it. We're going to use whatever money that we can use without going broad. You never spend all your money, because you never know what's going to happen next, that you may need some money. So, we are planning on getting a plan on the dirt roads in the five districts and look at the ones that need it the most, and that's when we'll start rocking to try to help maintain and lower the cost on motor grader work. But at the same time, we can't blacktop and rock these roads if we're not going to maintain them.
You said five roads and five districts.
Five districts, roads in each of the districts.
But you didn't say how many.
No, ma'am. Because we got to look at it and see how many that we can quickly fix with the money that we have, because right now, our allocation runs about a month and a half behind. But right now, we got four point five million dollars is allocated in the state program. That's not our money no more, it already gone. You see what I'm saying? Four point five million dollars left us with five hundred thousand to work with. Now, I spoke with Mr. Ollie before you went out. We already have allocated thirty thousand dollars for signs to go through, and he was in the process of working with some sign people to build the signs. We also allocated, and this money is already for the county, ninety thousand dollars for rock. That money is still sitting in Columbia, that's our money. And I let Ms. Jennings talk about Boogaloo, even though it's in Mr. Conley area. So, Camino's communicating about Boogaloo.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask you. Y'all have money still allocated for the Boogaloo crossing?
That four hundred thousand dollars is still sitting there for Boogaloo, because when we allocated it in eighteen, seventeen eighteen, the state along with C S S said we had to have that money froze for them, just in case they get ready to go to work, they had money up front. So, that money still froze in the allocation.
Will you talk about that, son?
You don't have to talk about it, boy. He asked a question, so I answered his question. But that four hundred thousand dollars is still there. Now, what we're going to have to work on is, we got an engineering firm still out there for Boogaloo. They still get paid.
I got some information.
Okay. That's good. We asked Walter, Mrs. Sanders, to take a look at that. Let me ask you, or not ask you, but would you please add, in my district, McKenzie Street?
I had that on my sheet.
McKenzie Street, is that a dirt road?
That's right off of College Street, and you pass Exxon and that cross over Flat Street, and you can't see the street, because it's nothing but weeds.
Is that the little street right there by the um Red Gall name house?
No. It's still issue, it's still issue, when you pass Exxon on College.
Yeah.
And Flat Street, and there's a trailer set right there on Flat.
Yeah.
Behind the trailer, it's the street.
Goes back in there.
Yeah, goes back in the trailer.
Before you get to the pink house.
It goes back to Wilson Street.
Okay.
Running back to Wilson.
All right, we look at it. Is it in rock already?
It's always been a dirt road.
Okay.
As a kid, I used to walk that.
Temple.
I like to see it.
I'll look at it next week.
I want it, I don't necessarily want it paved, I'd like to see dirt, a little bit of dirt.
Well, it's a dirt. You need to send the motor grader in there at the back of it and fix it. If no one, you want to see it dirty, that's not under me, that's under the number script.
James, take a look at it. If you think it needs to be paved, and John and Mary and she lives, she passed it every day.
Okay, but I'll look at it. Yes, sir.
Ask a question. Isn't there some type of estimated per yards or per half mile or whatever? I know you mentioned in the blacktop. What's the...
It's about a million dollars per mile right now.
About a million dollars per mile.
That's paved.
That's paved.
And it's half that for repaving?
Yeah.
What about repaving? What's that?
I don't know the number right now, but paving is a million dollars.
Okay.
Can we recommend some streets in...
There's a lot of streets already on the list. There's a lot of research, um, streets is already on the list, a whole bunch of them.
I'm talking about dirt roads.
Yes, ma'am. Get your list, and that's what we need to work with. You councilmen in your district, generate a list. You can't tell us how to spend the money, but you can generate a list and give it to us. And if we got sense, we can do what you want, dog.
Mr. Pinkney, Mr. Pinkney, there's a street behind, well, across from My Hope Church in Martin.
My Hope Road.
You know where Liza live?
My Hope Road.
And the road that goes by her house.
Yes, ma'am.
I forgot the man's name, but he called it all the time.
Johnny Robert.
That's right.
Complaining about the road.
Yeah, well, every time the motor grader go in there, he generally leave a bunch of dirt right by his house. Not the new motor grader operator now, he just got here, we ain't gonna bank by him, he just got here. We got to help him, but the motor cats doing messing up.
James, thank you, and I think we all have heard, if you got some roads or know some roads, we'll get them to you.
Get them to us, and let us, the committee, look at them, and we're going to show you we can get some things done.
Okay. Thank you so much, Oliver. Okay, we're down to council report, and I spoke with Ms. Jennings earlier, she told me she was going to be sharp, so I'm going to let her go first, and we're going to judge how sharp she is.
I'm going to be very sharp, because Mr. Pinkney did one of my reports, so I only have two. The first one, I, Ms. Connor, gave each one of you a handout, a copy of this from the policy manual. Each one of you have a copy of this on your, and I'm only, I'm going to address the first paragraph on that sheet that deals with the uniforms. And what it says is that Allendale County will furnish uniforms and the appropriate safety equipment, goggles, hard ass rain gear for designated employees. Any employee who reports to work out of uniform will be sent home and not paid for the time away from work. Shirts, pants, safety shoes where applicable must be worn at all times. Uniforms are not to be worn during off-duty. And the reason that I read that, and I'm going to reference Public Works, at the present time, Public Works have employees wearing shorts to work. And I think that would be a liability to the county, or Madison County, for, to someone to please Ms. Lewis to look into that, because the policy is that they have to wear, all Public Works employees, are they issued uniforms?
Yes.
Okay, is it permissible for them to wear shorts?
I wouldn't think so. If their worker tie is what it is, then that's what we expect them to wear. If they need to change that, that is going to have to come back to council, and personally, personally, a committee would have to make a recommendation, but until that policy is changed, uniforms are required.
So, please, do I have to...
I think you will, you will ask an administrator to investigate and enforce the policy.
Thank you for that one. That was short.
Oh, mine, that's it?
No. I only have one more, because, okay. Okay, this one deals, my next one deals with Parks and Recreation, and the Parks and Recreation Committee met last night. Of course, I was absent, but Laurie gave me the report today, I have the report on what happened at the committee meeting. Several months ago, County Council approved for the town of Allendale to use Winthrop Park for a splash park. Remember?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Laura, Laurie has informed me that, well, let me back up. Yeah, Laurie informed me that at the meeting last night, a person from town council was there, and they indicated that they were going to remove all of the playground equipment, is that correct?
That's right.
From the park. Laurie said that we can't do that, because that, that equipment was bought with government money. And Winthrop Foundation donated ten thousand dollars to that park to purchase equipment. And then, the state gave us money to buy the other equipment. And Laurie said that we would have to communicate with the state before we can do anything with that equipment, whether we can remove it or whatever we can do with it. But she also stated that she felt that there was enough property there for a splash park without them touching the, the equipment, but they never came to council to state that they were going to, they were just going to remove the equipment.
Yeah, we never agreed to that.
No.
Our agreement was we'd allow to use space in the park for a splash pad.
And the thing is, I totally agree that there's enough space out there, based on their interpretation of the size of that splash park. You could actually go beyond the playground area with that and still have plenty of room, so I don't see the big, I don't see it as being a big issue, just like some of the other things we deal with the town on, we just got to sit at the table and work things out. Number one, did that person indicated whether they had received the grant?
Pardon me?
Did that person last night indicated whether the town has received the grant?
Did they also?
Uh, no. No. No.
I think it was something...
Because the whole lot...
City council showed up, he showed up, so he's on the recreation committee.
Yes.
I don't think he showed up to represent the city, the town, but I think he just gave us some information.
Okay.
But the meeting wasn't about, he's on that recreation committee, so he showed up, you know, for that interest.
Well, we expect them, soon as they find out if it's a positive goal, then we'll sit back at the table and designate an area for that. That's the way it should be done.
So, they shouldn't go ahead and do that without coming back to council?
They can't do that. They can't do that. Yes, sir?
If I'm not wrong, boy, but Chairman, I seen Sister Fitz, which is on the city council, at Walmart last Thursday, and she expressed to me that she has a grant in her hand for Winthrop Park.
Okay.
She was talking outside of her mind, I don't know, but she did tell me that they had a grant to do Winthrop Park.
Well, we'll wait for them to officially notify us, and we will get back at the table, and we will designate an area. We did not designate the entire Winthrop Park for that, so we just got to get back and just talk about it.
Is that something that the committee members should communicate to the recreation department?
Well, I think, you know, we could actually, you know, make some reference to it by contacting this Fitz, but, man, I kind of think they should contact us, but a lot of the fact...
It sounded like they were going forward, you know, with the Jenna.
Excuse me?
It sounded, it sounded...
They can't be going forward, boy, that, we don't know anything about it.
Well, we sounded agreeing.
Yeah.
Like I said, the meeting last night was not pertaining to that, and it came up during the meeting, but it wasn't about Winthrop Park. It just that conversation came up during the meeting, and like I said, the representative from the, from the town was there to represent, to talk about the, the meetings.
Well, council...
He was sharing us about that.
If council want to reach out to the town, I don't have a problem with that. Maybe the recreation committee can do that.
Or Ms. Lewis can do it. I mean, I don't mind, but you know, might get out, might step out of my place.
Well, since it was...
But I don't mind doing it.
Well, since it was at a recreation committee, I would reach out to that councilperson and say, you know, you referenced the park, splash park, who do we need to talk to in the town to find out the status? And go from there. Is that clear?
Okay, it's clear. Also, the, at the committee, they're still, we're still working on restrooms at the James L. Pinkney Park in Martin, and see, that's the open thing with park money too, you know?
Yes.
So, you know, and the committee is also working on a strategic plan for Parks and Recreation, because right now, you know, we having problems with Parks and Recreation. We cannot get participation from students. And Laurie has reached out to parents, she communicated by calling parents, she put it on Facebook, sent her flyers and et cetera, but Laurie said that she needs to be, people need to apply to, to participate in the program before the cutoff date, and they don't have enough students to apply, they would have to cancel the program. And I just wanted to bring it to council attention, that if you don't see any type of sports going on during the summer, it's because she's having difficulty getting students to participate in certain sports, not, not the entire recreation, but just certain, certain ages, certain ages or whatever. The Recreation Department would like to know of the possibility of leasing our concession in our sports programs to a food truck vendor, vendors, instead of us buying, buying the Boogaloo for every game, and we would get a percentage of whatever they sold at the games. How would council feel about that?
Well, I think we need a recommendation from the Recreation Committee. Y'all guys look at it and give us a recommendation, you know? If you think it would work, I can tell you, the last time I was down at the leasing center, it looks like a brochure still, because we, we stock up with all kind of food out of it, so...
In her, in her office?
Yes, so...
I was there today.
Okay, so I think it's something that we will need to look at through the eyes of the Recreation Committee and bring us a recommendation of. I don't think there'd be a problem getting rid of some of that food she has, or giving away herself, but I think the time may be right, it may give her more time to recruit students, athletes.
Well, Mr. Chairman, that's the end of my report.
You're done here. Thank you so very much. Thank you so very much. All right, Mr. Cheney?
On the Recreation.
Good evening.
I, uh...
I, um, attended the Office of Aging meeting, but there wasn't enough members, it just had a roundtable discussion. And it made me about to forget something, you remind me, okay? And they were just talking about the walking trail. The surveyor has to come back down because it came down the first time, it was a wetland. They have to look at it again and try to be surveyed and see how it's going to go.
Uh-huh.
Right, how much, how much wetland is back there and stuff like that.
Fill in or whatever, yeah.
Yeah, so.
You had a thing in here about that too.
I'm also on the Recreation Committee, but Maginons just covered that. Uh, me and Matt is on the law enforcement, he will cover that, so, but Chairman, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Conley?
All right, um, I'll start with the Sheriff's Department report. Um, had 41 total calls for the county.
Recreation?
Had 106 total calls for the city of Allendale. 242 total traffic stops, 208 traffic tickets issued, 12 arrests. Animal shelter had 24 calls, 14 dogs captured, four dogs sent to rescue. You know, currently have 27 dogs at the shelter. Uh, from Mr. Sav at the EMS, um, he reported that it had 211 calls. This is for a two-month period, from February 17th to April 12th, had 211 calls. 131 cases were transported to Allendale, 80 were transported out of the county. And we currently have two EMS units on the, on call at all times. On the fire, the St. Mark Fire Station, the general contractors have been sent the GO samples from that area, and the contractors have until May the 2nd to turn in the bids for that project. Uh, also have a new CTC appointment. Mr. Reggie McMillan's turns up and appoint Austin Connolly to replace Mr. McMillan. And in the studio, I've got all his information.
Who is the person, Mr. Conley?
Austin Connolly.
Oscar?
Austin.
Austin.
Austin?
Yeah.
Okay.
Austin Connolly. He is a family member of mine. His grandfather served, uh, chairman of the CTC committee about 20 years ago, so he's shown some interest, and I think he'll be a good addition to that committee. Also, I had a phone call from SCA last, when was that? Maybe Monday or Tuesday, we had a new industry visit the area. Um, looks very promising. Can't say too much about it at the time, but, um, it's going to be a pretty large investment, fair number of jobs. It's going to be, I think it's going to be a good industry, a good clean industry.
In Allendale?
Yes.
Say that again, I didn't hear you.
We had a industry visit Allendale County to visit the industrial site. Monday, SCA hosted them, they asked me to come out for some questions pertaining to, um, the property. So, they have not committed yet, but, um, they're, they're in the state for, for all week, so, uh, hopefully we'll have some good news to share before long. So, we currently have two industries looking in the county, um, actually looking at some of the same properties. So, both of them are very promising, so hopefully we'll get at least one, if not both. So, that's good news, and that's all I have, I think. Yeah.
You got, you got some repo in the executive session, right?
Oh, yeah, we did meet, um, John and I have continued to meet with the sheriff in the town of Allendale. We do have a draft contract in hand, um, and we've got some issues that we need to discuss in the executive session.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Conley. Mr. White?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and Councilman, um, just to follow Mr. Connolly's information regarding SCA, I actually attended the, um, Board of Directors meeting on April 1st, SCA. One of the actions that we've taken, Mr. Curtis Ward, was voted to be accepted as a member of, um, SCA per our advisement. Also, uh, some of the potential industries that are coming to not only Allendale, but our region were discussed. And one of the things that was emphasized is that, um, every area, every community needs to address housing. And, um, you know, when these, you know, industries think about our area, that's one of the calling cards that they look for, housing and infrastructure. And we are, uh, making strides in that, in that direction. So, we need to continue to, you know, kind of be vigilant about getting those things together, you know, in, in our planning, so. Personnel Committee met March 31st, and also we met today. And, uh, we have a lot of information to bring, and we have a lot of things that we need to take care of, and that's going to be taken care of in the executive session, so we're just preparing you for that.
Okay, great. Sounds great.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. White. I'm going to be brief. Just want to let you know that, uh, Association of County, we had one of our first retreats. It's been the first one in 30 years. And we have 23 board members and 22 of 23 actually showed up. We spent, uh, two evenings, uh, down in the panel of Bluff area, uh, Bluffton. Had some educational, uh, programs as well as legislative programs. And I discussed a little bit about our scholarship program, which the Board of Directors actually increased that. We used to do three to four per year, now we're doing 13. So, each county, instead of taking nine years or 10 years, it would take about four years to go around the entire 46 counties. And as president, uh, Allendale County will have a Presidential Scholar. I was happy to learn that, uh, we had a record number of participants from Allendale County that applied for the scholarship. I don't serve on that Scholarship Committee, but I did serve on the Scholarship Committee for Vanberg, Ballwell, Hampton, Charleston, Sumter, and like Colleton County. So, we had six counties, three of us interviewed nearly 18 participants. We were about 95% in agreement in those selection, which is kind of unreal. We got three people doing it differently, and, and, uh, we do have new criteria for, uh, the scholarship, scholarship recipients. And by the way, we've gone from 20,000 a year to 65,000 a year. Other words, we give out 13 scholarships at 5,000 each. So, it's, uh, it's a very good, uh, winning county. I think the last time that this county named a recipient was probably about eight or nine years ago. I think a young lady from one of our schools in the county. Actually, she lived in the county, but she actually attended school outside the county, but she became my recipient, so. Just want to keep you informed on that. Secondly, we had our LRT, Long Range Transportation Plan, meeting yesterday. This Long Range Transportation Plan covers about a five-year period. And what you're going to see in our region probably within the next couple of years would be, uh, some work in a, of Highway 78. 78 is getting a lot of attention now because of the traffic increase. And if you travel that, you get into, out of Montmorency and, and, uh, the Oakwood Elementary School is on that roadway. We tried to get the legislature a couple of years ago to give us a turn lane, but this five-year plan will certainly address that. What I didn't realize, making left turn on that, on that 78, a lot of the big trucks are pretty tough, so. That we need a lot of improvement on that particular roadway, so. Just, uh, keep an eye on that, and we'll try to keep you informed. Also, I met with Roar Dialing on Monday on the CB project, CB Bank Project. That's moving as well as we can expect, and hopefully we will have some additional information. I think we all seen the letter, uh, and by the way, backing up to the state. And I know Mr. Sanders has been keeping an eye on that, what our legislators are doing. Looks like earmarks may be a thing of past, and, uh, which kind of hurt us. I kind of wish Maginons would have gotten more earmarked last year, but, uh, that's, hopefully, that will reduce our income tax quicker than, than, than we anticipated. So, uh, you saw the letter, I've asked, the duplicate letter that we sent to, uh, a congressman that Mrs. Louis sent out, that will go to Senator Grimm, and also to Senator Scott, asking them for some, uh, expressional ideas and asking them for our, their support in, in maybe earmarking some things at the federal level for us. My thing has always been, if you don't ask, you don't, you don't get, so. We, hopefully get everyone to sign off on that. I, I, I think that's the way we did it on the last one. I think any council person signs. Is that right, Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Now, I've been looking and at a lot of things. As I shared, Mr. Chaney and I, we made some recommendation on the finance, and we're moving along. The treasury's been working very well with us. Our interim administrator and our chief financial officer, Ms. Lewis, has been working very well with the Finance Committee. I think we're on the same page, and, you know, we got most of our worries and concerns worked out. So, I think we're going to have, hopefully, smooth sailing as we move throughout the rest of this year, fiscal year. I had looked at several things, and I, I want council to really take a very good look at it. Number one, we need to do some screws up at the admin building, the, uh, grounds, trucks, and also inter, interiorly, uh, the carpets need to be replaced. I'm asking that you go out and get, get some bids on replacing the carpet and some landscaping work. Maybe something we can do. Our public works might be able to do something. But the building should be screws up. We also need some paint work and some re, re, uh, reworking of the windows and et cetera. That's a beautiful building, and, uh, I think we're probably in better financial condition now to do a little something. We may not be able to do all of it, but we need to, uh, have a place of business that our visitors, when they come, it represents this community. Secondly, I talked to Mr. Hall, he showed me that metal building behind the health department. The roof is about off. It's a metal roof. And I asked him to try to go out and get some bids on that, see what it's going to cost. We do have pieces of equipment in that facility, and we're going to run the risk of, you know, having trouble with whatever we got in there. There's some old antique furniture. I think the courthouse, old chairs and some of their furniture's still there. We need to preserve as much of that as we can. Secondly, you know, we got flagged a little bit when the insurance people came down and took a look at the voter registration building. We need to look at what we can do to, uh, improve the integrity of that roof. It may be temporarily, but at least it's not going to get any better if we're going to do something, so. Whether we got to, uh, do a spray foam type, uh, roofing on a temporary basis, but that's too nice a building, not to, not to at least try to preserve it. And, you know, that's something that, uh, you know, I'd like to see council go ahead and, and do. Also, we just got a letter on the CPD, uh, Community Development Block Grant. One of the things that I'd like us to look at is our water system. We talked about it, about a new tower, a water tank, excuse me. And we need to look at at least applying for a new water tank, which we were told a couple of years ago, we need to repaint it or need to refurbish. And if you look at the budget for the water department, they say we don't have that many customers, but we are. We are making some money on that water system, so. And I think we need to at least, uh, apply for grants. There may be an opportunity there. Water is significant. And as you know, we've talked to our congressman about expansion of the water system for Fairfax, and this certainly will go hand in hand in trying to, uh, to expand what we have. And I noticed, excuse me, we got notification the other day about the Community Development Block Grant. I think you signed, you signed a commitment or acknowledgement that it's open right now, and I think it's a, certainly a good time to at least look at it. Also, I was on phone with Oliver Corn, who's a member of the Airport Committee. Oliver has turned in his resignation, and I found out a couple of days ago, and hadn't had a chance to talk with him, but he's been there probably 10 or more years, so. Mr. Junior's trying to get a letter, let me sign it, thanking him for his service. He's been a good one, and I know he has a lot on his plate right now, so, but I think his service has been well worth the time, and he's, he's been a good team player, uh, for the Airport Committee. Lastly, on the airport, what I'd like to see us do, and just taking a look at our finance. The airport, unlike most of our entities here, was established to be self-supported. By that, they generate funds based on the fuel they sell. I'd like to see us establish a separate account for the airport. We give them seed money. And that seed money would probably be for one or two tanks. And as they sell, that money will turn over. That's the way it's designed. If you spend 30,000 on fuel, at the end of the day, they ought to be making, let's say, 31,000. So, they're making a profit. So, we should never, when it comes to fuel time, refueling, they should have enough in their, their account to do the refueling. I think that's to be the best way to kind of keep up with what we're doing at the airport. And they one of the, one of the few entities that we have within county government that was designed to be self-supported. We don't give away gasoline, and gasoline is a fuel, and that's our own product, so. If they don't come, we don't sell. So, which means if they don't come, we don't sell, then we shouldn't have that much going out of the general fund. So, I just want to try it for at least a year and see exactly where we are. Would that mean a separate accounting or a separate audit? I, I don't think so. I think it, it certainly could be incorporated with, uh, with our overall audit, because it's just a separate department, but it's self-sufficient. So, I hope we can take a look at that. And I think we're all seeing the financial support, uh, from our interim administrator. And I know we're going to have some questions, I would advise you to take a look at it. It's very clear, very precise. One of the things that struck out to me was the fact that we got 1.5 deficit, and we got 1.5 in the, uh, in the bank. That's where I read it, so we is zero. I mean, that's, that's a pretty good picture, because you got a deficit of 1.5, and you got a cash on hand of 1.5. That tells, tells me you're pretty even, James. That tells tells me you're pretty even, James. But that's a that was that was something I I noted and I advise counsel to take a close look at it. It's probably some of the better numbers. I think Matt kind of on his last last year, he he were adamant that the numbers were were looking better. I think we got good numbers, real number, and I think we can, without good numbers or real number, we can't we can't really determine where to go. So thank Ms. Lewis for that. Okay. Now, I was a little long, I'm sorry. I just had a lot. I had a lot, you know, when you become fully, fully educated on 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 the job that we all are doing, then one of the things I learned last weekend is that we sit here, we are leaders of leaders. So carry that with you. We are leaders of leaders. So how are we going to do that, gentlemen and young lady? We're trying to do it the best way we can. So that's the sentiment of this council. They're going to lead, they're going to lead the leaders because that's who we lead. Our sheriff was there, he's a leader, we're going to try to lead him and we appreciate him being with us. Ms. Lewis.
You ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening to the public and council. I would like to begin with an update on the grant that we applied for with through Clyburn's office last year. So because the federal government, because the federal government passed a continuing resolution, the original application was dead. Now, I've spoke to Dalton, president of Clyburn's office last week and he said now they are going to review the same information again. Right now, we do not have to reapply. That does mean that that two million dollar grant request that we put in, application we put in, they are reviewing it now on this round. So they're taking a fresh look at it. That does include upgrades to the buildings that you mentioned in your report. That so administration, so it's the renovation, revitalization and outfit of county buildings. So that's county why. The budget meetings, I'm going to be reaching out to council to begin setting up budget meetings. I have received some packets from the department heads. I would like to proceed and look at if I'm going to request that you give me times and days that we can begin starting weekly meetings in the next couple of weeks so that we can get that going. Also, the auditor has been notified that we want to proceed with the audit and I continually working with staff to move forward and have as much paperwork in order as we possibly can. Then I'd also like to make sure that as a part of this process that I begin meeting with the finance committee regularly when this audit starts, before it starts, through the process, just to make sure that they have all the information they need to keep the auditor on track and provide him with the information so things can move along much more quickly and in a timely manner. The last thing I'm going to mention, this is my final thing, the vacancies, some of the vacancies we've received notifications about after working with the finance committee, excuse me, personnel committee. I met with them this morning. We will be putting out more job applications or more job postings of any of these vacancies that came up and I'll make sure they have the job descriptions for review before they go up, but that's going to be done all in this week.
Okay. Any questions? How are you judging your staff, you know, with the show that you have?
Well, it's it's going well. We're pretty much doing what we have already been doing. We were we were at a good point with where we are. There is a retirement payment that needs to be done. I'm going to send out that notification because as you know, we're assessed late fees and another assessment. Where I am now, we haven't had much building permits. We have not, we haven't had much building permits, any of the permits that that needed to be completed. I was able to print that information out and learn how to do that and took care of that. Also looking at, I'm going to continue to go through the files to clean them up and see where we are with bills and be able to notify that as as the invoices come in, we're date stepping up, reviewing the files and making sure that that's up to date. So we're staying on top of it and as I did this past week, when I do everything, even if they're, I send them to be signed, the finance committee is reviewing them first. They're looking at them, reviewing them, we're discussing how and what, why we're doing it before the request is even made. They're approving, finance committee is approving the checklist thing, then the request to transfer funds is made after that. And that's only after those processes happen that we actually send the bills out. But we're, I've also worked with the finance committee to make sure that I understand what their priorities are besides the regular day to day utility bills so that and I'm following their instructions.
Okay. Thank you so much. Any questions? Mr. Sanders.
Okay, I have a few things. On the the Google crossing, we finally made contact with Emily Swearingen, who is the new engineer who is actually.
Same company.
Same company, yeah. Kenneth Johnson, who was the person who'd been working on it for years, left them and he transferred it to her. And what happened unfortunately, she never got what she needed to get, so she didn't realize she was supposed to be moving forward, but.
So it doesn't sound like he passed anything on to her.
Right. But so what we have now scheduled and William and I will, you know, will attend it by Zoom is she set up a meeting with CSX and that's scheduled for May the second to, you know, just to find out, you know, where we are and what we need to be doing and, you know, closing the loop. And she's also going to set up a meeting with the SCDOT to discuss the permit and the next steps because I know when Kenneth Kenneth was there, it indicated to me because, you know, the county's done everything we need to about the the right of ways and everything. We've gotten deeds to the property from the people out there. But he said because of the time that has lapsed that they're going to have to acquire again for some permits, so. But we are hopefully moving forward again. You know, this thing's been going on since probably about twenty five years now.
Yeah, yeah.
Since they closed that cross. And another thing, you know, at your last meeting, y'all had talked about changing the name of Moody Road to OJ Smith Road. And, you know, after y'all had discussed it further and we talked with David Epperson, you know, who had been administrator and talking about, no.
Yes, Clarin.
Clarin.
Clarin, yes. He suggested because of the issues that would be caused by changing the, you know, the name of the road from Moody to OJ Smith Road, that it would 911 and everyone have to change their address. And he had suggested that we go to the legislature and get them to to name, basically name the the road in in his honor. You know, you you see, you know, there's a sign between Allendale and Fairfax of Lieutenant Winston Robinson Jr. Highway, you know, do something like that, but you have to go through the legislature. And after the meeting, Ms. Lewis called me and said she thinks that's probably the best way to go. So I have contacted, you know, Lonnie and Brad's offices and they told me, they've asked me to send them all the information and then they would put that through the legislature.
Had to pass very easily.
And I've got some more, for those of you that didn't probably some more information about this, so we're moving forward with that.
Okay.
And the last thing, I've got some things in executive session too, but this is, I have not heard from Marlon Preach about this festival. You know, he hadn't gotten with me because, you know, last time he'd gotten with me and signed and he had, he provided, actually provided insurance. But I had gotten today, someone had handed me some flyers that they were handing out, that they were putting in people's mailboxes that basically says it's the Allendale County Unity Festival is what they're calling it. And if you look at his, at this, it's signed by Marlon Preach, Allendale County Councilman. It's how it's on that. But what I'm saying is, is the county needs to be careful since this is going to be on county property, you know, the liability issue. And you also got probably got the issue with this now with where's the security going to come from? Because they don't have any policemen in Allendale who's going to provide the security for them.
But it looks like what he was instructed to do with you, he has not done.
He's not done. I haven't heard from him.
And he can put out anything he wants.
Right.
But as far as having permission from the county, permission is only granted based on him filling those requirements that we ask.
Right.
So it's a new issue right now. He can publicize anything, but until he provide all the information that's been requested, he doesn't have a right to use any of our property.
Because, you know, last time, you know, we required them to get insurance.
I know, I know.
A few million dollars, we should require, you know, liability insurance is not expensive, but.
Walter, he has not, he has not done any of that, has he?
No, he hasn't contacted me since that last meeting, you know, your minister, see what I told him, anytime he wants to meet and I haven't heard from him.
But we can't stop him from putting out any kind of literature, you know?
I was just making the point that it looks like the county sponsored this and you don't want that.
But you could, the attorney could send him a letter and ask him to not use Allendale County's name.
Well, I think the fact that, does he say Allendale County Council? Yes, him.
Well, no, he says on this, no, he says Allendale County Utility Festival. Now, the brochure is the Allendale Unity Festival, but where he signs it with gratitude and shared purpose, it says Marlon Preach, Allendale County Councilman and Chairman of Allendale Unity Festival Committee.
I think that's maybe in order to contact on that and just remind him.
Probably an error or somebody over there.
Yeah, and remind him that he has not met his obligation to to use our property.
I think this is named the first, the third is when the brochure says.
Well, that's pretty close.
Yeah.
What you suggest?
Has he reached out to the sheriff for protection?
I don't know. He has not.
Is it legal for him to be going and putting stuff in people's mailbox like that?
No. That's what when the person told me.
I was thinking, that was my mom was going, that ain't even legal.
See, where where does, I mean, closing that Memorial Avenue, has that been addressed? Who who handles that?
That would be town and DOT, wouldn't it not?
Town and DOT will be in charge of closing the street. They got to have y'all's authority to do it.
Have you contacted them?
If it belongs to the county.
See, I think it's just, it's premature and I'm glad you provided that information, but until the young fellow need our obligation and and security portion of it and also whatever the town and DOT perspective, then it's pretty much mute really, you know?
I was told that he had reached, is it Evans? Is Evans the officer who they currently have, had reached out to the sheriff in Fairfax and SLED and everything and asked for assistance.
He sent a letter requesting and SLED has accepted that they will send some agents, but they are only secondary responders. They have to have officers within the jurisdiction to deal with the SLED agents.
Okay, so there's backup.
And then another thing that's going to come out is when Wiggins left as the chief from Allendale, their mutual aid agreements went null void. Evans has never been appointed the chief, so they don't have an active chief right now, so any mutual aid agreements.
Is out the window.
Are counsel.
That's right.
So if you get other agencies brought in here, that's another thing I was going to talk, address with council. If you bring all these agencies in other than state agencies and one of them officers get hurt, who is the liability going to fall on? Because I'm not requesting it.
And it's also, it's the town, the town council say they don't have anything to do with the festival. Marlon is doing this on his own.
Yep.
How did it operate last year? Because this, he did everything we asked last year, did he not?
Right.
Evans was still there.
And he had all the security and everything asked in place.
Because the chief was still here.
Yeah. It sounded like none of that has taken place. So would you mind reaching out to him, especially about the letter, which could be a typo, but it it went out to somebody?
Right.
I've seen some example of his T-shirt for that day that was on Facebook. Very impressive, you know? I didn't think much of it, I didn't, but I just figured he had everything.
I know last year we we voted to, or I think it was last year, voted to allow, to close the road starting at noon on Friday, is that right? Is that right, Chair? And I've seen a lot of stuff, festivals beginning on Thursday this year. I don't know how we're going to close the road down Thursday when we got people working at multiple buildings on this road. I don't, you know, is is closing the road down Thursday and all day Friday?
Is that, that's a Thursday and Friday he's asking for?
Well, it's got, maybe the first through the third, which would be three days.
Yeah, yeah.
And I don't know what.
I don't know.
It's Thursday, Friday and Saturday.
Thursday, Friday and Saturday.
The first on a Thursday?
Yeah.
Okay.
And see, the problem, problem is that if you shut down Memorial Avenue and then vendors come down there and set up.
Yeah, Thursday, Friday.
It becomes a hindrance to Gooding's office, to that and an office to the dry cleaners and everybody else that's running the business on Friday.
Walter, would you make a call with him and sit down with him and see exactly? Let him know I'm concerned and let him know he has not met his his obligation?
I assume this is his number up here. It has a number on it.
I'd assume. Ms. Lewis?
Yes, I would, excuse me. I would say that from what I saw last year, there were not enough vendors to warrant shutting it down on Thursday. So the vendors, though there were a few vendors, they were on side streets, they were on the sidewalk. There wasn't anything that would prevent the regular business operations from happening. Vendors started to come on Friday, but it still wasn't very many vendors. So I don't feel that there, from my experience last year, there is not a need to close anything down on Thursday.
Okay.
So we haven't been requested for anything, really?
Well, he has not met what we has asked him to do, so that's why, Walter, maybe two weeks out, two and a half weeks out, it may be a time to reach out to him.
I'll call him.
Especially with that letter.
Yeah. This is asking for sponsors.
I see last year, it was a normal level. I don't know if this, the word.
You have a four letter.
Four letters on.
Flashback, yeah, okay. Okay, there's there's two other lines, go ahead.
Chair, that's the question that I had, so is is the council opinion that on Thursday we're not going to close this street on Thursday?
I think that's a good, basically what Turner, who was down there last year, we don't need to, and we let him know that, Walter.
Okay, on Thursday?
Yes. Lastly, before we go into executive session, there's two things. I sent out an email concerning the Republican Party wanting to use the branch building and as I expressed, I don't have a problem with that. Any party that want to use the branch building for whatever, as long as not fundraising, I think should be open to the public. And secondly, we got a request from SRP Federal Credit Union. They want to do a financial literacy, community briefing on July 23rd at the branch building. I've already scheduled that and as you know, they're coming back, building a ground up facility and they want to connect with the community. Building a ground up facility, and they wanna connect with the community. And the July twenty-third presentation will begin at five o'clock. And if there's any topics, they open right now, if there's any topic that we'd like to see them cover with our citizenry, just let me know. Okay? Alrighty. Now. New business. Patmotta Breeze, Breeze Board Appointment. I think we got a request on the Patmotta Breeze reappointment, appointment. And I think uh, that's right now, our appointee is Witten Junior, Robinson Junior. And uh, I think they've requested that he be reappointed, so just wanna hear from council on that.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renumber that William Robinson Junior to serve in Patmotta Breeze Board.
Moving properly second. Any questions? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posits by the same side.
Okay. Um, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I notice another new business, can, can I?
Yes, ma'am.
Tell me something, please.
Sure.
Okay, um, since the passing of uh, Mr. Warren Smith, um, because I, I visited the Office of Agent today to find out, you know, well, okay, what they needed, you know, we don't want to be in a situation where we're gonna be losing money. Um, I don't know if we need to get in contact with Dr. Monarch to find out what needs to be done, or um. Ms. Lewis, can you?
Could they assist me temporarily?
Is anything in place for that?
They don't have anybody right now, they're trying to hire a new uh.
We're gonna talk about that executive session.
Office of Agent.
We'll talk about that executive session, yeah.
Okay, but we can make a call to Dr. Monarch, but you know, their staff, they've lost people. And, and they losing people.
I don't mean for them to send anyone, I mean, I just want to know, um, was there anything in particular that we needed to do since, you know, Boogie was all over there, we don't know.
And to follow up that report or whatever, yeah?
But we need to know that.
And he did have an administrative assistant, did he not, down there?
Ms. Feldman, and I spoke with her today, um, she's planning on retiring on May the twenty-sixth. But I did ask her, you know, because she only, she doesn't work on Mondays and Fridays. And so I asked her today if she would work on Mondays and Fridays until we could get somebody in place. And she said that she would. But I told her that, you know, communicate that with Ms. Lewis. And, but she was actually his right-hand person.
Well, that's why I'm asking, wouldn't, wouldn't she know anything that should be done that may fall in the cracks?
No.
She would not?
No, cause she was in a different, um.
She just in a transition.
Yeah. Okay. Alrighty. Thank you so much.
So you would check on that, Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, that's it, we'll make a motion to go into execu- session.
Sure.
Moving properly second, all in favor?
We're back in session and to counsel, is there any action needed to be taken?
Mr. Chairman, I'm making motion to authorize Attorney Sanders to mediate a pending legal action.
Okay. Got motion?
Second.
Second. Moving properly second that we allow our attorney to mediate a legal matter in behalf of the county. Any question? All in favor let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Close this by the same sentence I say. Any other items?
Mr. Chairman, making motion to accept the recommendations from the personnel committee and allow our interim administrator to enact the recommendations.
Okay.
Second.
Moving properly second that will allow our interim administrator, Ms. Lewis, to move forward with the recommendation from the personnel committee. Any questions? All in favor let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Close it. Aye, sir. Any other action counsel?
Chairman, making motion either way.
Sir. Moving properly second that will adjourn the time being 9:03 PM. Thank you.